I call to order the regular city mini, regular meeting of the city commission this Monday, August 12, 2019. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Clerk, has the role been taken?
It has, all are present tonight.
On our agenda, we have proclamations and presentations. The first is an update of the 2019 Major Baseball Little League State Tournament by John McLean and Kurt Wagner.
My name's Jim McLean, not John. John's my brother. Resident of Isabella County all my life, worked for the city thirty-three and a half years, so most of you I know through code enforcement. A couple of years ago, we found we had the possibility of hosting this state tournament, so I started politicking for it through our district. It came down to Mount Pleasant and Midland. Midland backed out because of the LPGA tournament that ended up coming there, and it was going to be too much for them. So, got together with Kurt, decided we'd do a joint effort with the city little league and the Union Township Little League. That way, we could provide four quality fields instead of two that most of these tournaments do. We brought in sixteen teams from all over the state, including the Upper Peninsula. And by using four fields, we didn't have volunteers out there all day long on just two fields, running four games on each field. You baseball people will understand what I'm talking about, so we only had two games a day on each field. Volunteers were out there half the time, and it was a lot better for them. The goals for the tournament were to offer more than just a couple of things that they normally do. Lot of them will just do a picnic. We did a banquet out at the Comfort Inn for all the players and coaches and dignitaries and tournament officials. Mr. Bischel, the manager or the coach for Central Michigan University, came and spoke and did an excellent job, excellent job related to the kids. It was a great time. We then had a picnic the next night that was offered to everybody, but parents and other siblings had to pay a few bucks, but it, all in all, it was saving them money. The following night, we had a pizza party and the home run derby. That went over really well. So, we had a lot of fun, we provided entertainment for them while they were here, a lot more than most of these tournaments do. The lodging in Mount Pleasant cooperated quite well with us through the Visitors and Conventions Bureau that helped out a lot, but most of the time, your hotels will hold rooms two weeks in advance of an event. They held ours up to four days in advance, because most of the teams didn't know who was coming until that Sunday before. So, that was huge. And all in all, we did not have a single complaint about lodging, which normally is, happens at these tournaments. Nobody had a problem finding lodging. The volunteers that came together pulled this off. It ended up being one of the best tournaments I've ever been involved in, and we had a lot of praise from everywhere. No negative comments at all. All four fields were in top shape. A lot of that had to do with funding we secured from the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe through a joint effort there, and we were able to upgrade the fields and do a lot of things that, that was needed. Our parks employees from both municipalities did an excellent job of keeping things cleaned up, bathrooms running, all that. We had excellent umpiring. All our umpires came from either our district or District 14, which is Bay City-Saginaw. MAC TV covered the semifinals and the finals, and that was pretty cool. Kids got on TV there, and you're able to access that now. So, many good people from the community contributed funds to this project. We did come out a little ahead, which is not the norm, but we pulled it off. And I'm very proud of everything that went on. And the team that won it was from District 14, which is Bay City Northwest Little League. They went on to the regional, if anybody was watching it. They won their first game, but then they lost their second and third game, so they were out. The team that won the regional down in Indianapolis was Kentucky, and they're now playing in the Little League World Series beginning Thursday or Friday. So, I'm gonna let Kurt talk, and he's only got about a half hour.
Thanks, Jim. I know we have the five-minute time limit, so I'll keep mine short. First, I want to thank all of you guys. I know it's been a crazy year with our first set of fundraising. We raised over a hundred thousand dollars for all the improvements to Pickens Field between, I don't even want to name everything that we actually were able to improve and upgrade, but we did all through donations, in-kind work and grants, so that's fantastic. It didn't, didn't cost the league any extra money, so we're able to keep our costs down for another year for the families, so we really appreciate all of that. Like Jim said, the 12 U State Tournament was a huge success, no complaints there. It was great to be a part of such a big thing. I know we don't get the option again for another seventeen years, and by then, I better not have a grandkid who's involved in Little League at that point, because my kids are thirteen and eleven, so I don't even want to think that far. But I wanted to say, too, that combining with Union Township to put on the best tournament possible was the way to go. Like Jim said, having the four fields really helped cut back the work, and having, you know, limited families and everything else to be able to put on the best tournament, we didn't. We didn't have a complaint. It was, it was run well on both sides. We had fantastic turnout every day, and once again, I just want to say thank you for all that you allowed us to do.
Were there any questions on anything?
I just want to say thank you for bringing all the recognition to our community and pulling the community together for all the hard work.
You're welcome. It was, it was great to do.
The program we gave you, I'm a little prejudiced on this, but I think it's one of the finest programs that the state has ever offered, any of these tournaments. And I'm really proud of it, I'll tell you that. And the pins we had designed, each one of you got that, that was a state tournament pin. All the kids got one, and then we sold some at the concession stand and everything.
Thank you.
Oh, and Kurt's going to Williamsport next week to watch games. I've been there a few times. I can't go this year, but it's quite an experience.
Didn't you umpire the finals one year, Jim?
What's that?
Didn't you umpire the finals one year?
I did in 2004. I got the privilege of umpiring the Little League World Series. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation by Swim Friends of Mid-Michigan regarding the Aquatic Center.
Hi, my name is Lisa Diaz-Saitzma. I know many of you. I'm a community member here, and I want to talk to you today about the Swim Friends of Mid-Michigan and the work we've done towards investigating the feasibility of an aquatic center here in the community. So, we started this work a couple of years ago, maybe pushing two and a half years, with the, with the understanding that Rose Pool was closing at the university, and there was this conversation and a need addressed that we needed an opportunity to look at what is the true feasibility of an aquatic center here in the community. The, the committee, which we call ourselves Swim Friends of Mid-Michigan, is, is made up of many different community members here, from the university level to the health profession area, to local business community, to the seniors are represented. It's a very diverse group of stakeholders. When we gathered, we quickly realized there was one thing we did not have, and that was expertise around swimming pools. So, we quickly realized that to really truly do this feasibility study, we needed some expertise and some folks that really understood what we should be looking at, how we should be looking at it, and how feasibility would be determined. We then started a national search for a firm that specializes in aquatics, aquatic centers. We raised twenty thousand dollars, and we hired a firm, actually out of Ann Arbor, Michigan, called the Isaac Group, who have done feasibility studies across the country in many communities such as ours, and had an understanding and familiarity with Mount Pleasant community. So, we hired the organization with the understanding from our committee saying, "We want you to prove us that this is truly possible. We don't want you to tell us it is if it's not. We want you to truly do a study that's going to really analyze if there's a sustainable business model around an aquatic center in this community." We did not want to invest more time, more energy, more resources, if that wasn't true. So, that was what we set them off to do. They started the study by really looking at need. They spent a lot of time understanding the needs in this community, what, who and what were, were the needs in the community, before they even began to design what would a pool or an aquatic center look like. Through that need study, they determined there is a high demand, and it came from everything from, you know, learn to swim to rehab, health, and senior programs, and everything in the middle, from recreation to, to safety, to fitness of some sort. So, it really had a broad spectrum of need. In the end, what we learned through this study is that there was definitely a demand. Through interviews and gathering of letters of interest, we have confirmed that need. And through that, then, we figured out that, or they, they determined that to have a sustainable business model, if we were to build a pool that was like the pools of the past here, Island Park or the other one, Chip, come on, Chip, Chip Wood, we would not succeed. It is not a sustainable model. That to truly do a sustainable business model, it has to be able to serve more need, need groups in one period of time. And so, through that process, using very conservative revenue estimates, very liberal expenses, it was determined that, A, if we were to build a twenty-five-yard stretch pool with a teaching body of water, which is a body that would be warmer in temperature, that it is a sustainable model, that it is a model that, as a business, can sustain itself in the long run, including upkeep, maintenance, top-of-the-line equipment that helps with the water and air quality, which is what really causes significant issues with aquatic centers and their facility. So, from that, we took that high demand. In fact, the consultants actually scoped out hour by hour of the pool use, the pools use, to determine, you know, is the space feasible for the, for the demand? And so, you can, if you, when you see the feasibility study, you'll see there are six different models of different times of year, and the needs and the use that would be used during those times of year, that is then backed up by letters of interest from community organizations, need organizations, that have an interest in using the aquatic center. From, from that, we started to say, okay, what are site options? And we started to investigate some potential site options. That has definitely not been narrowed down, but we found a number of partners to talk to, to look at different opportunities to place this aquatic center in a place that is user-friendly and feasible for others to access and take advantage of. We also, one thing I always like to mention is that, in all those models of pool use, there's always open swim time. There's always time for any member of the community to come in at any time. So, this is not like we build it and there's no time for you to use it. There's always time for the community to come in and have access to the pool. So, that land us on the capital fund. So, the feasibility study wasn't about doing a fundraising study, a capital campaign study. The feasibility study was really about the business model. And so, what we did determine, though, however, through the feasibility study, is what the cost would be to, to build the aquatic center. And now, we're at the point to say, okay, we know it's sustainable, we know what it's going to cost to run it, we have a very detailed budget of all the different expenses to operate this facility, we have a detailed understanding of what the revenue expectations are, now we need to say, okay, now, how do we build it? And that brings us to where we are today, which is looking at the possibility of a recreation authority and starting to investigate the use of a rec authority towards this aquatic center effort. A rec authority, which I think some of you have some familiarity with, has some opportunity to raise, you know, not only local funds, but both private and public foundation funds, grant opportunities. It has a lot of opportunities. In addition, it has the feasibility to then be the manager of such, such an endeavor. So, today, we're just wanting to talk about, have you look at the possibility of joining some others in investigating the feasibility or the, the need for starting a recreation authority around this particular issue. The last thing I want to leave you with and answer any questions that you have is the statement that the consultants made in the plan, kind of summarizing the, the findings, was, "A facility that meets the community needs in a cost-effective and sustainable model is possible." And for years, I've, I've lived here for many years now, and for years, I've always wondered, I came out of a community that I think we had two, three pools within our school system and a community pool, and, I mean, we just had a lot. And I always wondered why it wasn't here. And I think, for the first time, we have a study that really says, "We are, we are worthy of this, and we have a need for it." And so, I'm hoping that you will join our small little band of community volunteers and take this to the next step, because it's, it's a one significant piece we're missing in this community, and the multi-generational use of this, of these, of aquatic centers in all communities is significant. This isn't just for the young, this isn't just for the old, this isn't just for the families. This literally conserves so many people in our community, and it's year-round, which if we have a winter like we had last year, we need something year-round that can keep us active. So, any, do we do questions or we don't do questions?
We can do questions.
Any, any questions? I know some of you have seen the feasibility study, but do you guys have any questions that you'd like to ask me? Yeah?
So, the resolution looked so, Union Township pledged five thousand dollars, and I'm assuming you're also looking for us to also pledge five thousand dollars. Could you explain what that money is being used for?
Yeah, so, and, and it's up to, so we don't exactly know what those, you know, what our costs are going to be, but to really fully vet out the, the feasibility of, or the need for, I don't want to say need, the establishment of a rec authority, we're going to need some legal funds to do that, so some dollars to pay some attorneys with the agreement development between the different entities. There's going to be probably some dollars to do, do some financial analysis, deeper than what we have in the feasibility study, because what the feasibility study doesn't have is land in here, and so, what is it going to take to develop that? And there may be some need to do some pre-work, because the feasibility study is based on some consultants that have done this work around the country, but it doesn't have an architectural drawing. It doesn't have those components. So, for us to then take this to say, okay, how, you know, exactly how much money are we going to need? We may need to do some of those components to put a little more meat to it. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah?
At this point, the indication is that Union Township would be a partner, and the city's being asked to be a partner. Have you approached other units? Do we know if there are any other units that would also be involved?
So, the school district has been approached, so that is really where our next effort is going to get to, to the school district, and they've been, you know, very positive about it, and thus far, we will hopefully take it to their board next month and get them on board. Yeah.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have our quarterly update from Jim McBride of Middle Michigan Development Corporation.
Thank you. Got three different handouts. If you'll turn to this one first, I'm just going to hit a couple of the highlights. On page three, we had Olson and Associates come in on June 20th with the MEDC. MEDC hired them to look at sites around the state, some of the featured sites on their website, and one of the featured sites is the Mount Pleasant Smart Zone. They only did seven sites at this particular outing, which was their second round in the state. So, what this means basically is Olson Associates will be advising MEDC on how to better market the Mount Pleasant Smart Zone nationwide, so that's a really good thing. They're already doing it, but this is going to give some additional muscle to that effort. Next one down, we have added a section in our real estate website that redevelopment-ready sites, since you're a redevelopment-ready community now officially. So, as we add properties here, they'll not only be on our website, but they'll, they'll be given extra concierge service at the MEDC level as well, since they're listed as RRC-approved sites. Then the one below that, just wanted to, you know, congratulate you guys once again for being number thirty-one in the state, and the very, what I really take pride in is you were first in Region Five. We beat Saginaw Future. So, they are now redevelopment-ready community, too. They were number two, but, you know, it was a pretty big feather in the cap to go through all that work and, and become the first one in the area. Flipping over, not a new topic, but as you all know, with American Mitsuba, they're in the middle of their expansion. Right now, they've hired five of the jobs of the forty-five already, but they're going to be investing thirteen million. We're not counting that in our investment numbers yet, that I'll show you in a, in a few minutes, but that will be counted before the end of the year. Opposite page, just want to mention, Ken Whiskey Cabinets has put in some major new equipment, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in capital improvements in, on their shop floor with brand-new CNC and edgebander. Bill's Custom Fab is working with us, and, and we've mentioned before that we have this defense contracting grant through the Michigan Defense Center, and Brian Roberts is on our staff, and he's working with companies in the area, so Bill's Custom Fab is one of the ones that stepped forward and said they want to pursue federal contracts with Defense Department and Homeland Security. So, that's going to be adding some business to them as we go forward. Flipping over, 410 West Broadway, as you all know, continues to make progress. Now, again, this brochure, we send out to all of our membership, and we also put it online, so there's some things you guys know well, but there's things that we wanted to talk about here to the general public, so we're excited about that. I, I think we're, I think things are looking very good there. Pace Central Michigan had their grand opening. They really credit us with helping them to find the site that they located. So, that was not an incentive, that was just site assistance, helping them find a location to, to locate their operation. And if you don't know anything about Pace, it's an outstanding opportunity for senior citizens that might be, you know, nursing homebound, but they have the opportunity to live in their homes much longer by getting the services that Pace provides. So, it's a great, it's a great program. Flipping over, My Career Quest, we have, we have currently worked to enroll about ten thousand students in the area in My Career Quest coming up on October 30th to present high school students primarily and graduates with opportunities for jobs and, and career opportunities. So, that's coming up in the fall, on October 30th. You also might know, we did the CMU New Venture Competition Grant, first time we've ever done a grant. I've been a judge on that for many, many years, but, in fact, since they began, but this was the first year that we did a grant, and it was a two-thousand-dollar grant, and Ignite Donuts won that grant. And our grant was, unlike any of the other ones, that we have a hard requirement that you have to stay in the area, you know, and I know that that's something we're all concerned about, you know, keeping these CMU students here. So, Ignite got the grant, and they are actually using our offices right now just as an office area. They are making their donuts at the Aramar kitchens, and they're marketing their donuts all around town at Food Truck Friday and many other places. So, it's a great student success story in a business that we hope really continues to take off. Other page, Local Intel on our Business Growth tab on our website, we've got a lot of information. I know several of you have said to me in the past that there's a lot of information on our website. Well, there's even more now. If you go to the Business Growth tab, there's, we're partnering with Local Intel with all kinds of data on the area, so you might want to check that out. And then, basically, inside back page, all the upcoming things, the Coming Home Event, Employer Training coming up, our Cyber Security Summit, any of you could go to that, our Coming Home Networking Event at Mountain Town Station, and that's designed to link up students that are coming back for homecoming with employers that are interested in hiring them. So, again, we're doing everything we can to try to communicate that message. We want students or former students or people that moved away to come back and, and fill some of these open positions that companies have. Our Quarterly Breakfast will be October 15th, and My Career Quest, again, is on, on October 30th. The next document, and I'm not really going to go into this in depth, this document is really designed for developers and site selectors, so this really just has a ton of data on the inside about the Mount Pleasant Smart Zone. We do mention the Gibbs Conceptual Design Plan, got aerial review, aerial views, and then all the site details, like, you know, if we've got the answer, it's in here, if there's somebody you need to call, we've got their name and phone number, how to reach them. And so, all of this is the kind of detail that a site selector or a company or a developer, these are the questions that they would want to ask, so it's all right here. This is one of the things that we had to do in order to get the Smart Zone on the featured site list for the MEDC. We had an earlier version, which I showed you last year. This is version two, and this was after we got some feedback from developers and site selectors to improve the earlier document. So, this is after we've gotten all that feedback and made those changes. So, that's that document. And then, I know you always want to know what, how we divide out the numbers for the city of Mount Pleasant, so this is the last sheet here. And even though this is our second quarter update, since I'm here in August, we are giving you this update through July 31st, so it's really a little more than the second quarter. Company visits, thirty-nine. We have an asterix there. Nineteen of those calls were me going out and getting the signatures for the commitment that the local owners at the Mount Pleasant South Industrial Park were making to come up with the ten percent that you asked them to do for this grant for the retention pond. So, the feds will pay eighty percent of that. It's looking good for us, but the final approvals still are yet to come, but they would cover eighty percent. The city's offered to do ten, and, and the owners would have been asked to do ten. So, I had to get the signatures from all these owners, and some of them live out of town, you know, and some of them are hard to track down, and so, but we did. We got, we got all, it took me nineteen visits to get fifteen signatures, but I did count those as part of a company calls. New job hires at forty-six, just for our area. Net new investments, now, this net new investments only includes three hundred and sixty thousand for American Mitsuba, so we'll be including that total investment number once we have a final number from them. So, that's not- So that's not in here yet, and that's going to be in the neighborhood of 13 million. And then company assists at 64. So that's, if we're asked to do, you know, certain things to help a company, we can sometimes have more than one per visit. So that's the update.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have any questions for Jim?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Next on our agenda, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll open the first public comment section. Please, this is now the time to comment on anything that is on the agenda tonight. You can come to the podium, state your name, your address, and you will have five minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, I will now close the public comment section. Next is a receipt of petitions and communications. Manager Ridley?
Yes, under this section tonight, you have the report on the pending items. You have the minutes from the Planning Commission from June of both their work session and their regular meeting. And then you have various correspondence that was received regarding adult use or recreational marijuana establishments. And in your packet, you had seven communications on this topic. One was from CMU Police Chief Larry Klaus. And we, you'll recall, we made an outreach to CMU for their input, and this was in response to that. We also made an outreach to all of the industrial property owners in the city. And before we put the packet out, you received five communications in response to that outreach from Pete Rogers of Pete's Autobody, Doug Struble of Lease Management, Sam Staples, who owns money, or property in Industrial Park South, Rudolph Klur of Klur Land, and Alex Hollenbeck of On the Mark. Then we also received a communication from Sal Viviano regarding adult use marijuana. Then tonight on the dais, you have communications that came in after the packet went out. And three of those, again, were in response to our mailing to the industrial property owners. So you heard from Kathleen Mumford of Mumford Oil and Gas, Jason Harless, who has residential land in an industrial district, and Andy Tyson on behalf of Kynewinski Construction and members of the Industrial Park South Review Board. And then you also received a communication from Brandon McQueen.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. Consent Calendar are items on our agenda with an asterisk next to them. Are there any items that need to be removed from the Consent Calendar tonight? Seeing none? Manager Ridley, would you like to go through those?
Yes, the items we're recommending are the approval of the minutes of your regular meeting and of July 22nd. And then we have two resolutions regarding a pavement warranty program. There was legislation that was approved in 2015 that required all local road agencies to adopt a pavement warranty program that was acceptable to MDOT and that this program had to be applied to any local project that utilizes state or federal funds, which includes $2 million or more in paving costs. We're not likely to encounter a local pavement program that we would administer at that level, but the state legislation still requires us to have a pavement warranty program on the books. So therefore, we're recommending you approve the two resolutions that were presented tonight, which are adopt the standard pavement warranty program, which was approved by MDOT, and our agreement to implement it if it's appropriate for a project. Next, we're asking you to set three public hearings. The first one is on a rezoning request. And this is for a parcel of land that's related to our park on Canal Street. That park is comprised of two parcels. And during the approval of the zoning map last year to implement the zoning districts, one of the parcels was inadvertently zoned as CD3 instead of the proper civic zone. So the Planning Commission held the required public hearing and is recommending approval of the amendment to rezone it to civic zone. As you know, you're also required to hold a public hearing, so we're recommending that public hearing be set for September 9th. The second public hearing is for a text change to the zoning ordinance, which relates to non-conforming parking lots. And this was one of the items that was brought forward in relation to the zoning ordinance that this commission referred to the Planning Commission for review and a recommendation. And the proposed change would allow for the reconstruction of certain non-conforming parking lots. And it would apply in instances where the parking lot does not meet the location requirement, but it requires that the lot comply with all of the other zoning standards if it's reconstructed. And I should note that it would still require compliance, of course, with our stormwater ordinance. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing and unanimously recommended this amendment to address that concern. And again, we're recommending your public hearing take place on September 9th. And then the third public hearing we're recommending you set is for an amendment to Chapter 30. You'll recall, we did a fairly comprehensive amendment to that chapter last year. And as the Charter Committee was reviewing it, they're recommending a slight change to what was done last year, which would require a simple majority for adding or deleting either a work session or a closed session to the already published agenda. All other items would still require the two-thirds vote of all commissioners to add or delete an item. So we're recommending that public hearing for August 26th. The next item is for a contract with the Renaissance Public School Academy. For the last two years, we've provided peak services at that school. And both entities feel that this program has been a success and are recommending a contract for this upcoming school year. And the contract is identical to last year's contract. So we're recommending you authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. And the next item is for voting delegates at the Michigan Municipal League Convention, which takes place at the end of September. The Michigan Municipal League requires that you indicate who your voting delegates will be, and we have to notify them by August 21st. So based on who's scheduled to attend the conference so far this year, we're recommending that the mayor be the voting delegate and the vice mayor be the alternate. And then the last item on the Consent Calendar is approval of payrolls and warrants.
Commissioner Kulik?
Move to approve the Consent Calendar as presented.
Vice Mayor Gillis?
Second.
Discussion? Commissioner Tolles?
In reviewing on the text change number 14 for Section 154-114, to move this to a public hearing, I think basically, nothing has changed on this. If we look at Section 154-114, Item B, non-conforming uses, structures and improvements. And basically, it spells out any structural improvement or use lawfully existing upon the effective date of this chapter or subsequent amendment that does not conform to the provisions of this chapter may be continued, provided there is no increase or enlargement in degree or manner of non-conformance. Then you go to Section 5A, which is ordinary maintenance. Then you drop down to 5D, repaving of driveways and parking lots is allowed. I mean, we're going on the second season here. We've got 12 or 13 people waiting to do maintenance on their parking lots, and this is all we got so far? And this text change just makes no sense. I mean, you look at it, and this is not allowing anything different. It's just adding stuff to encumber this and just make it more difficult. I'm just not happy with this.
It is adding something different under the current zoning ordinance. If a parking lot applies for reconstruction, it's required to meet all requirements of the zoning ordinance, which means the location would have to be in compliance with the zoning ordinance as well. And what this amendment does is it allows the location to stay where it currently is, even though that doesn't match the current zoning ordinance. So it does allow a reconstruction of an existing parking lot where it is.
I understand that, but the whole problem is, right now, the way this reads in this zoning book, anybody can sit there and do maintenance, just as long as they're not changing the non-conformity, either enlarging it or reducing it. And you have city officials going out here and telling people they want to do maintenance on their lots, they can't do it until they do storm retention and blah of this and blah of that. You can't grind off an inch and a half. You have to grind off three inches, which is not in here. I asked for it before. It's not in this zoning ordinance. So how are you going to enforce it if it's not in here?
Commissioner Tolles, I appreciate that you have some issues with the text changes, but we are considering whether or not to set a public hearing. So I would refer, if you have questions or concerns, that you refer them to staff. And if you have an issue with setting a public hearing, keep your comments to that. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Calendar's. Oh, we do. That's right. All those in favor of approving the Consent Calendar, please vote by saying aye.
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 And those opposed the same.
Opposed.
The motion passes six to one. Next on our agenda is our first public hearing of the night, which is a public hearing on the creation of the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone. Manager Ridley, would you like to introduce us?
Yes, if the commission is okay, I'm actually going to cover my comments for both the public hearing and the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone and the Commercial Redevelopment District at the same time to speed things up. Because, as you know, both of these are related to the 410 West Broadway project, which we've discussed in depth at various work sessions and meetings. So I would summarize it to say that the purchase agreement includes a commitment for approval of two tax abatements related to the proposed project. And the state law requires that to start those tax abatements, the creation of a district is needed for each of the requested abatements. And then after the district is created, then the developer can apply for the actual tax abatements for the project. So the first one is the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone, and that applies to a construction that's a mixed-use building available for lease and is in a principal shopping district. And we're recommending one parcel of land for that district, which is 410 West Broadway. And that one would be in place for up to 15 years. All you're doing this evening on that topic is holding the public hearing as state law requires that you not take action until the other units of government have had a 60-day notice on that. So that action will be recommended at your September 23rd meeting. The second district and the second public hearing is for a Commercial Redevelopment District, and that applies to a mixed-use building with high-density residential in a principal shopping district. Again, we're recommending the same parcel of land, 410 West Broadway, and this abatement can only be in place for up to 12 years. On this one, after the public hearing, you can consider the resolution this evening because the state notice requirements are different. So we're asking you to formally create the district this evening by approving the resolution that's been presented. So what I would suggest you do is hold the public hearing on the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone first, close that public hearing, then open the public hearing for the Commercial Redevelopment District, close that public hearing, and then consider the resolution on the Commercial Redevelopment District.
I will now open the public hearing for the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone. As previous, you can step up to the podium. You will have five minutes. Please state your name and your address. Seeing no one coming forward, I will now close the first public hearing on the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone. Our second public hearing is on the creation of the Commercial Redevelopment District. I will open this public hearing now, and the same applies. Seeing no one coming forward, for this public hearing, I will now close this public hearing. Commissioner Kulik?
Move to approve the resolution of intent to designate a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone as presented.
Commissioner Ling?
Second.
Discussion? Vice Mayor Gillis?
I'm excited about development at 410 West Broadway. I cannot support any tax abatements on this property. I feel the residents have paid over and over again for what was supposed to be coinciding development between the Borden Building and 410. And I know plenty of businesses who are struggling to keep up with their taxes and the other expenses that they incur. I also believe that rental housing, in particular, missing-middle rental housing, is a lucrative business as we do have central students along with other people that would want those type of apartments that range from $700 to $1,100. I do believe, again, like it's a lucrative business, so I cannot support a tax abatement for a prime piece of riverfront property. I will be voting no on this.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Tolles?
I will also not be supporting this. And one of the reasons is that this is located in the PSD, and they're going to be opted out of this PSD where all the rest of the businesses are paying their fees and have been for many years, and they don't have the option to opt out. If you're going to allow them to opt out, then you should allow any of the other businesses in the PSD to opt out. That's my comment on that.
Commissioner Ling?
I second this because, obviously, I support the tax abatement on this particular piece of property. I think you have to look at tax abatements very carefully, and I think it's good to ask questions about what is the benefit to the community. I believe in this situation, there is great benefit to the community. Right now, and for many decades, really, we've received no tax revenue from that property because there's been no development on it. We've been trying since 2006, when we started the process of building, renovating the Borden Building, to develop property there. The recession that we had kind of interfered with some of those plans, but we're now back at the point where I think that with this assistance, there's a good possibility we're going to be able to reach the goal that the community voted for in, I think it was 2006, 2005, 2006. In this case, I think, you have to ask yourself, are you better off with it or without it? And in this case, I think we're better off with it. It's not costing the city any money initially. And while we will only be receiving part of the taxes for the first 12 years and then the first 15 years on the other part, we're receiving nothing now from it. So it seems to me that we come out ahead, and in the long run, it will be a great source of tax revenue. So I think that it overall is beneficial to the city.
Commissioner Kulik?
Agree with Commissioner Ling. In addition, I'm not aware that we have agreed to or necessarily even discussed the idea of the developer opting out of paying the parking assessment in the Principal Shopping Center District.
I will also be supporting this. If you look at the challenges that are involved in developing this land, the city is being, is the recipient of a seven, or we're applying for a $700,000 grant through MEDC to clear up infrastructure costs. There are several issues. There's a pump station. There is a line, a pipeline, a sewer line underneath the property. And there's also electrical adjacent to the building that needs to be moved or buried. Not only that, we're working with a group that is a nonprofit, and their profit margins are much less than a private developer. We've been trying to develop this land for a long time, and this is the first project that has come forward that has a viable way to success. And it will be a source of hundreds of thousands of tax dollars over the next several decades. This project is going to be a great asset to our, to our community in terms of workforce housing, giving a long-term business a place to grow, and also going to add vibrancy and a new building to our downtown. Is there any other discussion? Vice Mayor Gillis?
Clarification, on the PSD, which gives a special assessment to all the businesses for using parking lots that aren't theirs. And then 410's, Michigan Capital, Mid-Michigan Capital, is that right?
Michigan Community Capital.
Thank you. Michigan Community Capital, being they're going to be using two of our municipal parking lots here at City Hall and across the street. With what we're doing right now, they will not be part of that assessment?
No, the tax abatement, once approved, applies to their general property taxes. It does not apply to special assessments. So the special assessment is what funds the snow removal for parking lots and the beautification of the hanging baskets and so forth. And that special assessment would not be a And that special assessment would not be abated under a tax abatement. So they would pay the same formula that any other property owner in the downtown would pay.
Seeing no, Commissioner Tolles.
Other point of clarification, I keep hearing from this board that we had no other deals that were brought forward on this property, which is incorrect. You had LodgeCo. Company, you had Mercantile Bank, and you had MRCRE that presented two other deals. So there was four other deals on the table that the commissions before turned down.
Vice Mayor Gillis.
And just in addition, we did have Maple Grove, and that was all ready to go. Completely, it came to the commission, I think, two years ago in December of 2017, and that abatement was voted down because they wanted, it wasn't an abatement. It was, what was it? Ms. Ridley, can you help me out?
It was a brownfield reimbursement agreement.
Thank you. A brownfield reimbursement agreement, which is another pot of money that they get money for, for their development. So there was other other developments that were coming to look at the prime piece of property. So, just just so that everybody has the facts.
Commissioner Lalone.
So my understanding is that Mercantile Bank is not going to build on that property anymore. We don't have a deal with them. This is the only deal we have. We can't go into the past and wish for better deals and wish for different votes and wish for different people on the commission because that cannot happen. We could only deal with what we have in front of us, and I think this is a good deal. So I'm going to be voting for it.
I think the clarification was just to clear up that this was the only development that we had offered, and and that is not accurate. That that was the clarification.
Commissioner Kulik.
This is the only development that's reached this stage of fruition. The other ones died for a variety of reasons. And some of them never did the due diligence, some of them never did the site analysis, some of them never did the soil analysis that would have possibly killed their projects as well.
Seeing no other discussion, all those.
Mayor, before you take a vote, I need to clarify something. The clerk just mentioned that when you made your motion, Commissioner Kulik, you referred to the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone. I think you meant to designate the Commercial Redevelopment District.
That's correct.
So the second of the motion, okay. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew you're voting on the Commercial Redevelopment District.
Thank you. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
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 And those opposed the same.
Aye.
That passes five to two. Next on our agenda is item number ten, which is to consider appeal to the removal of dangerous trees on private property under City Ordinance 9911. I believe we have the appellant here.
I told the property owner before she started speaking, I would give a little bit of framing to the issue, so she's prepared for me to do this. Occasionally, we're notified by city residents, or we may notice that there are trees or shrubbery that may be hazardous to the public right-of-way. And so if it's within the right-of-way, we typically take care of that. But if it's on private property, we don't have the ability to do that, so we follow Ordinance Section 9911 that you just referred to. And we asked the private property owner to address the danger. I mentioned in the background material that over the last few years, we've notified thirteen property owners of concerns with their private trees, and thus far, nine of them have complied and taken care of it. When these property owners were notified at 420 South Kinney related to their tree, it's grown so that the base is partially within the right-of-way, and then it leans over the sidewalk. So the tree seemed to be dangerous, but the property owners have provided information from an arborist that indicates that the tree is healthy. So we are no longer concerned about the health of the tree and it falling at this point in time, and they've agreed to have it evaluated annually to make sure it stays healthy. But the concern is that it still does obstruct the sidewalk because of the way it leans over the sidewalk. And so the property owners have asked for an appeal because they prefer to not take down the large, beautiful, healthy tree. So they will provide you some verbal comment tonight. They've provided you their written appeal. And even though the ordinance allows you fifteen days to make a decision, we've tried to outline some potential options for you in the commission packet of action you might be able to take if you wanted to do that this evening. And the property owners have seen those options as well. They saw the information as well. So with that, I will turn it over to her. Thank you.
I'm Karen Varanouskas at 420 South Kinney. We love that tree, and it would be a shame to cut down such a fine, healthy tree. It is a concern. It's, it does lean out over the sidewalk. One of the suggestions that was made was making an S-shaped detour between the two trees, one on city property and the one on our property, to make it safer for people to navigate. And we're in favor of that option. And in her message, Ms. Ridley also suggested that maybe we would even be willing to pay for it, and we would if it comes to that. Do you have any questions?
Could you explain a little bit about the arborist that you had to check out the tree and then what they found?
Yeah, it's in your packet. Dave Breedlove, who's done other work for the city, and in fact, looked at this tree some years ago, is the one who came out, and he found the tree completely healthy. He came on a really windy day, and we, you know, watched the tree, and there was no sign of earth movement. That was one of the things he checked for. He looked for broken branches or anything like that, and the tree was was very strong and very healthy. There was no sign of any illness or breakage.
Commissioner Kulik.
This is on the same block I live on, and I walk by that tree almost daily. I've lived there since 1988, and I can't say that I've seen the tree move at all. I'm not sure where the property line is at that location. The, typically, the sidewalk is totally in the city right-of-way. Now, the inside edge of the sidewalk could be on the lot line, and it could be a foot inside the lot line or anything in between there, without really knowing where the lot line is. If it, if the sidewalk is, in fact, a foot into the right-of-way, and that's an eighteen-inch tree, then twelve of the eighteen inches is already in the city right-of-way, and only six inches would be on my neighbor's property. Having said all that, I would move that we do option three, which would be to move or reverse the request for the tree removal and ask that the property owners provide a written report to DPW Director annually regarding the health of the tree.
Support.
Okay. Is there any, did you have any comments before we move into our discussion?
No, we're glad to provide a report on the tree annually.
Okay. I will open up this to discussion now. Commissioner Lalone.
It sounds like a healthy tree, and people are going to be watching it to make sure it doesn't fall over, so I'm in favor of option three.
There's ample room to walk through there. You can ride a bike through there. You probably couldn't ride two bikes abreast through there, but, you know, that's not the only place in town where hedges hang over the sidewalk, and you have to single file for a while and pull back in.
Commissioner Ling.
I'm also supportive of option three. I was looking, we talked about the possibility of maybe when that, changing that sidewalk, and I just wondered whether or not, we do regular maintenance of sidewalks, so I assume that at some point, we'll be looking at whether or not, at that sidewalk, for repair. I don't know if it's on the list of sidewalks that would need to be repaired or not, but I just wonder whether or not, if at the point where we're working on that block, I wondered if we could potentially look at what would be involved in creating an S shape and then talk about the options as talked about in option four, but for now, I'm comfortable with option three.
And just to answer that, we, the sidewalk is not in a condition yet where it's on any list for replacement. It's still in fairly good shape, but we can certainly make note of that. And we mentioned that a couple of years ago when we repaved the street, so we can make note of it. But we don't see that in the foreseeable future, that that will be necessary at that location.
Vice Mayor Gillis.
I went and seen the tree this morning before I went to work, and as I was talking to you, yeah, before the meeting, I did exactly what you say everyone does, is walk by and touch the tree, because it's probably been there more years than I've been alive, so I will be supporting this too. I'm glad to see that the commission is on the same page. It would be a shame to cut down such a beautiful tree. And as long as you're looking, you know, watching it and and being aware of any kind of movement from the earth, I think we should be okay. So, thank you for coming and speaking with us this evening.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please vote by saying aye.
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 And those opposed the same. Passes seven zero.
Drop the mic. You don't get many seven zeros.
Next on our agenda is to consider a resolution in support of exploring the creation of a recreational authority as a means to advance community dialogue regarding an aquatic center. Mayor Ridley.
Yes, I had a number of comments prepared of what to say for this, but quite frankly, Lisa did such a great job on her presentation, she took most of what I was going to say. So I will just summarize it to say, we believe this resolution is important so that we can further this dialogue about the potential of having an aquatic center in our community. And we're not committing to creating the recreational authority by passing this resolution. We're committing to continuing to have the discussion with other units of government. And we've always talked at the city level that we were interested in it, but not if it was just us by ourselves. So I think this gives us a great opportunity to work with other units of government to see if there's a possibility for this construction to be funded. The resolution indicates that the two members from the city for this committee are recommended to be the city manager, and then the charter says that the mayor typically makes an appointment to ad hoc committees. So we've recommended that the mayor appoint a city commissioner to the committee so that we have the elected officials' viewpoint as we do some of that investigation. So we recommend you approve the resolution as presented.
Commissioner Kulik.
Move to approve the resolution as presented.
Vice Mayor Gillis.
Second.
Commissioner Kulik.
I'm glad we're taking the approach of trying to do this cooperatively and not the city trying to do it all on on the back of just the city taxpayers. We've had some success in recent years with projects with Union Township, the dog park being one of the most recent ones, and the joint water study being a second one. I hope this is another step that we can take to do cooperative agreements countywide and save everybody some money at the deal.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, please vote by saying aye.
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 And those opposed the same?
Aye.
Six to one. Next on our agenda is item number eighteen, which is to consider a closed session pursuant to subsection eight H of the Open Meetings Act. Commissioner Kulik.
Move to consider a closed session pursuant to the subsection eight H of the Open Meetings Act to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
Second. Commissioner Ling. Any discussion? I believe we'll have a roll call vote. Commissioner Kulik.
Yes.
Commissioner Lalone.
Yes.
Commissioner Ling.
Yes.
Commissioner Pirscherbacher.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolles.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is announcements on city-related issues and new business. Commissioner Ling.
I'd like to thank some people who were involved in the sister city visit. We had seven visitors from Okeechobee, Japan here for about ten days, starting on July twenty-eighth. And they had a great visit, and there were a lot of people involved in making it possible. I'd like to publicly thank the International Relations Council, who coordinated it, the host families, who make it possible for the students to find out what it's like to live in Mount Pleasant, the city staff, many of whom were involved in helping particularly with the tour of the city and the parks, and especially Addie Pritchard, the administrative assistant, who really went over and above in preparing gifts for them. We have a lot of businesses that help out. Mitsubo's been a great help over the years. Isabella Bank and Trust has been a great help. There's a number of others. But I really want to do a special shout-out tonight to Crapeau Ford, who, over the years, has been extremely generous in providing us with vans that make it possible for us to pick up the students and take them back to the airport, and also for their trip to Mackinac Island and to Michigan Adventure. And they've been doing this for several decades. And it would not be possible for us to have the program without them, so I want to publicly thank them for their contribution.
Commissioner Pirscherbacher.
About so many light-years away or behind us, in 1977, New Hope was released. It was the first Star Wars movie. On the twenty-third, at midnight of August, twenty-third of August, and on the twenty-fourth, at 3:00 PM, that movie has been let out of the vault by George Lucas, and the Broadway Theater will once again show this movie. On midnight, it will be a costume contest. At 3:00 PM, it will be open to whoever wants to come see it for a nice matinee. I encourage you all to down your Princess Leia and your Chewbacca outfits and come on down.
Get the cinnamon buns on the side of your head.
I would just like to echo some of the comments that Commissioner Ling made about our delegation from Okeechobee, Japan. I had the opportunity to spend some time with them, and it sounds like they had a really positive experience here. And it was a, we had a picnic in the park, and they came and visited City Hall. And we actually had a member of their staff from the planning, from their planning department. And it was very interesting, some of the differences that lie within that realm. And I'd also like to mention that this past week, we had our Arts Pavilion ribbon-cutting event, and it went off really well, thanks to staff and Taylor Idema, who really were the engine behind all of that, that great success. And it was an honor to be part of that as well. I'd also like to mention that on August seventeenth, that their downtown will have the Dancing in the Streets event from noon to 3:00 PM. That'll be on a Saturday. And then on the eighteenth, if you still have some energy left from dancing, ICRH will be working on their new, their new building, and they'll be painting. So from noon to three, if you have a paintbrush or a strong back, I'm sure they'd appreciate the help. And they're over next next door to ACAP and the Michigan Building and in the old Summit Clubhouse. So feel free to show up. Any other new business or announcements?
Vice Mayor Gillis.
Just want to add to the amphitheater. It was a great event. Two different acts, a one-man acoustic band, Jim, who did an awesome job pulling all the people there into rhythm, and also the CMU's concert band. Staff, thank you for making that happen. Of course, Taylor Idema was the one who had the vision, and of course, when she was cutting the ribbon, I told her, "Take your time. This is your your spot." Might not happen again in her lifetime, but you never know. She she might have a lot of other things that she has on her radar. But I also would like to thank all the donors that made that happen. Saginaw, Chipotle Indian Tribe, our community foundations, many donors. We do have a plaque downtown, or down at Island Park for all those that contributed. And it goes just another example of Mount Pleasant and how it takes a village. And we definitely have that to look forward to for the future. Thank you.
Any other announcements or new business tonight?
I would just like to add that we, our agenda looks a little different than it usually does, but we will. But we will be going into a closed session and then we will be taking action on the agenda item after that closed session, which is concerning the ballot language of the adult-use marijuana establishment petition that will be on the ballot. So, seeing no other announcements or new business, I will now open our public comments section. If you have any public comment, any city-related business, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you for naming the street after Larry Collins. This is his birthday. He'd be ninety-four if he were still alive. He died on the twenty-third of August, twenty seventeen. And he was also instrumental in Okeechobee, Japan that you're talking about and getting all that started. So, thank you for recognizing him. And I thought I'd recognize him today.
Thanks Doug. I'm sure you appreciate it.
My name is Ben McQueen. I'd like to be put on the agenda for the next Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. I was kicked out of the public parks where lies, people lied on me. And I'd like to go back to the public park. I've lived here all my life. And I wasn't, there's a lot of stuff in the report that the police put in there that I didn't do. And I have witnesses. And I just don't think it's right that I got kicked out of the park without a hearing of some kind or, you know, some extenuating evidence. You know, something that, you know, they could prove that I did or something. I mean, I'd just like to put on, be put on the next agenda for the commission of the parks meeting. If you could do that for me, I'd really appreciate it. I'd like to go back to the parks.
The staff is expecting you to be at the next Parks and Recreation Commission to hear that appeal. So, that's already planned for at the next meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission. So, we'll call to make sure you know when the date of that is.
Okay, I really appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Seeing no one else come forward, I will now close the public comments section. And we will reset us for our closed section.
Are we just going to have it in the conference room down here?
petition received for adult-use marijuana establishments and consider the ballot language for the November 5th, 2019 ballot. Major Ridley, would you like to discuss?
Yes, as outlined in your agenda packet, the city clerk's office received an initiative petition on July 30th, and the petition contained 544 signatures. And of those, 324 have been verified as city-registered voters. So based on the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, the threshold of signatures for an initiative is greater than 5% of the votes cast for the last governor's election. So the 324 verified signatures equate to 5.1% of the voters, so it meets that threshold. So we're therefore recommending that you formally accept the initiative petition, which includes the proposed ordinance from the petitioners, and that you approve the ballot language this evening because the county clerk needs that ballot language by tomorrow at 4:00 PM. And the ballot language was drafted by the city attorney and provides a summary overview of the proposed ordinance. So we recommend you approve the language as presented.
I would entertain a motion to adopt the ballot language as presented.
So moved.